I'm Jessie Roberts, his daughter, and I'll be reading a statement for him. This is my dad, Sid. My name is Sid Roberts. I'm running for a second term on the Linwood City Council. I want to first thank the Women's League of Voters for having this forum and for allowing the statement to be read in my absence. My purpose for running for Linwood City Council is simple. I want to continue to provide leadership, direction, and civility to the council and to the city of Linwood. I believe I have helped foster common sense, respect, and old-fashioned manners on the council. Yet, the job is not finished, and hard work and communication skills are still critically needed. It's easy to find things wrong with Linwood or the city council, but to have vision for realistic improvements takes wisdom and leadership. As to my accomplishments while on the council, I helped lead the charge to ban fireworks in our city and also to promote smoke-free city parks. I proposed a revenue-neutral business license fee that helped the city balance the budget. I've used my commercial real estate background to help the council make level-headed land use decisions, and my attendance on the council has been nearly perfect. I'm a strong backer of professional fire and police protection and believe public safety is job one. I stand behind our public safety professionals. I'm concerned about traffic in the area and support finding ways now to fix our roads, which badly need repair. I also support having sensible budgetary habits and not spending more money than the city has. We must always remember it as the taxpayers' money. Many things are changing in Linwood. I believe my background in commercial real estate, along with my negotiation skillset and my willingness to communicate, will help our council chart those potentially rough waters. I have credibility with the business community, with the mayor's office, with city leaders and department directors, and I'm known for my friendly demeanor and trustworthiness. I currently serve as the council liaison to community transit. Thank you very much.
And we'll continue with these statements from the candidates. I've lost my agenda, so we'll start with Shirley Sutton, two minutes.
Hold that microphone close to your mouth.
Can everybody hear me? Interesting. I'm Shirley Sutton, and I am running for position number four for the council of Linwood. And I would like to say that, you know, over the last 10, 12 years, I have attended religiously the council meetings. I've heard opinions that have been brought forward about changes, what the citizens wanted, and also have experienced some things that have gone against those wishes. I am not available in terms of supporting those kinds of things. And where I am right now in this terms of my life is that the citizens need to be honored and respected, and what you wish to happen in our cities is very, very important. Very important. The other thing I want to say is that I'm also concerned about the effect that is happening environmentally. I think the coal and oral ore, excuse me, trains are waiting to happen here. And we don't have really an understanding of what we are needing to do in terms of evacuation, in terms of emergency preparedness. And that's something I feel needs to happen to us all. We need to know what we need to be doing in those kinds of disasters. We've already experienced and lived through. Also, we do not need to have one of those happening here. And so, anyway, okay, I've been given the sign. Oh, I do, okay. And so, anyway, it's important for us to really be engaged in what our city is doing, the forwardness. And I have given the stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton.
Thank you. Actually, it's pronounced Simmons.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Again, my name is Lauren Simmons, and I'm seeking reelection to the Linwood City Council, position four. One of my favorite mentors in life is Charlie Brown. And Charlie Brown made a statement not too long ago that said something to this effect: "There's nothing quite so heavy as the burden of great potential." I've been on the council of Linwood long enough to know that we have suffered under the burden of great potential, but this evening, I am delighted to tell you that we are on the verge of doing some of the most outstanding things that this city has ever imagined. We're moving in the right direction. We're making progress. And the evidence clearly indicates that Linwood is on the cusp of becoming the major urban center of South Snohomish County. Right now, there are no less than 20-plus major projects breaking ground with more on the drawing board. The community vision is well on its way to becoming a reality. I'm participating in this exercise this evening because I am here to ask you to sincerely consider returning me to the city council for the next four years. I know our time is limited. I have handouts in the back of the room, and I would encourage you to pick those up and to read about the goals and objectives, as well as some of the achievements that I have had in the time that I have been on the city council. Thank you.
My name is Maria Ambalada. I have lived here in South Snohomish County for 56 years. I was born in the Philippines, and I lived in two wars. One is the World War II and the Korean War at the time. I run for office a lot of times. I run like a prophet, a passion of a prophet. I want to make a change. I want to begin the change in the politics that most of us enjoy and hate. It is the fact that I want to stop blaming politics for the failure of some politicians. That's just how politics are. We have to stop saying that. By doing that, we will be able to bring in people that have quality to run for office and that they are not ashamed to be called politicians. I'm running my campaign without any money. I do not like political endorsement. I do not like money. But I like money. But to run for office, I am a walking example that when you do good in the community consistently, your heart is open to solve the problem of your neighbor, to be creative, attend a council meeting all the time. I have more perfect attendance than some of our council members. And so, people will see that. I would not need any money to run for office, and I like to write. I like to write to the editors and...
Thank you very much.
Would you pass the microphone on?
My name's Chris Frizzell, and just being in this building takes me back to when I was 16. I had my first job in this building at a buck ninety an hour. I think that dates me a little bit, but my job was to reshow the books. I went to Edmunds Community College after I graduated from Meadowdale High School, and I got my degree in accounting from Central Washington University. I've now spent 35 years being an accountant, 28 of those years as a self-employed accountant with a variety of businesses. My background, my blood, is numbers, and I'm looking forward to working with others on the council. They've recently adopted a budgeting-for-outcomes concept for managing the city resources, and I'm so excited to get into that. I'm already reading some books that have been referenced to me on that. For over 20 years, I've been a volunteer. I think that to whom much is given, much is required, and I think everyone in every one of these seats, much has been given to just be a citizen of the United States, and I think we have much to give back, and I believe very much in doing that. I have run and I've participated in a number of outreach programs, whether it's Neighbors in Need, the Cold Weather Shelter, a meal program up in Everett for eight years. I mentored women at the Snohomish County Jail. I still stay in contact with some of them. Also, on that same note, of the people that we were ministering to, many of them were homeless and under-resourced people, people that couldn't afford with their paychecks to put food on the table. And I think that we need a comprehensive plan for dealing with homeless issues. And it can't be just one city at a time. It's got to be a county-wide plan. And to that end, I'm part of the Homeless Policy Task Force for Snohomish County, and I look forward to dealing with those tough challenges. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Goodwin. I am very pleased to be here, and I'm more excited to see all of you here. Today, I had the distinct honor to listen to John C. Maxwell speak at a conference in Seattle. And he was talking about business leaders and leaders in general, and what do people look for in leaders? There are three questions that people ask generally when they're looking for a leader. The first one is, does the leader like me? And I can assure all of you that I more than like you. I love each and every one of you, and I show that by the votes that I make on our city council meetings. Secondly, the person will ask themselves, can that leader help me? And I can help you, and that's what I've been trying to do on the council in working and collaborating with the mayor, with other council members, and with the administration. And lastly, the question that people will ask themselves, can I trust you? You can trust me. The way that I will show that and that I have shown that is, will you be better off when I leave or when I'm finished than you were when I started? When I started four years ago, the city was in a much worse position. The first four years, we have gained traction, momentum, and we're cruising right along. And in the next four years, we're going to see more extended growth. We're going to see jobs. We're going to see things come about in Linwood that haven't been here before, and I'm very excited to be part of that. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for participating and being engaged citizens. That's what we need, and that's what we appreciate. So, thank you.
Got to watch that stopwatch. Hey, I'm George Hurst, and I'm running for position six in the city council. And I've been asking myself, why would anybody want to even run for the Linwood City Council? It's a part-time pay position, not even that, but it's a full-time commitment. And I have come to the point in my life where I really want to make a difference, and I believe the next two years are going to be crucial for the city of Linwood. And I'd like to just give us a little tour of what's going to happen in the next two years in Linwood, so visually follow me. So, if we go up 196 to the convention center, you look across that convention center, there's going to be a six-story apartment building. There's going to be a six-story Hilton Hotel. You go back a little bit on 40th, behind Azelle's Chicken, where there's a Bales Bond now, there's going to be a six-story senior citizen project, and that is being dug right now. And then, let's go up 44th towards Mount Lake Terrace, just before you get to Albertson's, but we're still in Linwood. There's going to be a 265-unit affordable housing complex going up. Then you look across, and let's just look across to the Linwood Transit Center, which in eight years, we're going to have 20,000 commuter trips going through that transit center. But go a little farther, where the Scriber Lake, where it used to be the senior center, there's going to be another senior housing project being built. Okay, so what is the city council doing to make sure that fire service, police service, and the roads are maintained? Well, this, the majority of the city council has reduced the budget of fire, police. The road maintenance that the public works has asked for, they have cut less than half of what public works wanted. So, I think really the city council needs to come to grasp that this city is growing. It needs to thrive, but it needs to make decisions that are fair to the citizens and will let the city grow fairly.
Hi, I'm Shannon Sessions, and I'm running for position seven on the Linwood City Council. And I'm a longtime Linwood resident and homeowner, a major stakeholder in this community, and I am prepared to serve you. Let me tell you some reasons how. I will maintain my proactive approach towards public safety, enhance and guide economic growth, and foster an environment where families, services, businesses can thrive. As Linwood develops into a major regional center, I have a vested interest in maintaining a high quality of life for its residents. My extensive public and professional involvement in this community gives me a unique understanding of and experience with the challenges that we're facing here in Linwood. For example, I'm prepared to serve you because of my professional background. I'm the owner of a small business located in Linwood of Corporate Crime Prevention, a Linwood-based safety consulting firm. I spent eight-plus years as the crime prevention specialist and former public information officer with the Linwood Police Department, also a volunteer coordinator there. I spent eight-plus years as the editor and writer for the Enterprise Newspapers, covering government, public safety issues for South Snohomish County and Northwest King County. I have a bachelor's degree in communications from University of Washington. I'm a veteran. I'm proud to tell you that I'm a veteran. I served in the United States Air Force as a firefighter, and I'm a member of the Linwood Veterans of Foreign War Post 1040. I have been married for 22 years. Our five children have all attended the Edmunds School District. Four of them are here with us tonight. I am a graduate also of Meadowdale High School. Like Chris, though, we were chiefs, not mavericks. I'm a longtime Rotary Club of Linwood board member, and I've volunteered for years in the schools and at my church and mentored and think of myself as a very positive role model for youth in the community. I'm prepared to serve Linwood and its residents. Prepare for a better Linwood. Elect Shannon Sessions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the League, fellow candidates and citizens. I am Councilmember Van Abishan, serving in my first term. I'm a 32-year resident of Linwood, a small business owner, and a proud father of three boys. Prior to my election in 2011, I spent 14 years volunteering in Pacific Little League. I worked on the mayor's community visioning task group to craft a vision statement for the city, and later I was appointed to the Linwood Planning Commission, working on such projects as City Center, Highway 99, Linwood Crossing, and the beginnings of Linwood Place. Upon taking office in 2012, the council finished the work on Linwood Place with Costco scheduled to open next month. All of these experiences have taught me many things, but the one thing that stands out the most is what we can accomplish when we come together to work toward a common goal in an open and collaborative manner without the encumbrances of personal or political agendas, as I believe this is the basis for open government. Everything we do as public officials, how we conduct our meetings, how we must allow for public input, how we must be open in our communications, both among ourselves and our constituents and stakeholders, is all mandated in some rule-ordinance law put in place to ensure that we all play by the rules. The Open Government Act was enacted to ensure that public officials remain answerable and accessible to people they serve. When public officials begin to think that they know better than anyone else and that they don't have to play by the rules, that they are somehow not accountable and they can no longer govern, in my estimation. I have a record of standing up when I encounter such activities, and I will continue to do so. Today, I believe that Linwood faces many opportunities to be the regional model of a sustainable, vibrant community with engaged citizens and an accountable government, as stated in our community vision. However, I believe this will only be attainable through open collaborative communication and leadership and engagement with the public. Thank you.
If you would pass that microphone back down to Mr. Simmons. We'll start the questioning with him. Are there issues surrounding Linwood's infrastructure, and do you have some solutions for them?
Well, I don't think anyone that has driven the streets of Linwood would doubt that there are issues about the infrastructure, particularly our streets and arterials. One of the things that we are trying to cope with is the fact that we are a nighttime city of 36,000 people, but during the day, we have between 80,000 and 100,000 people who pound our streets, including big trucks and buses from community transit. The bottom line is that we have for years not been able to effectively and efficiently stay up with the pounding that our streets have taken. We are attempting to put together a game plan that will increase the amount of resources that we have on an ongoing basis, but quite frankly, that is not probably a single-issue thing. We're probably going to have to put together a combination of fundings to meet that need. But one way or the other, we will, because we have to. It is probably the number-one concern that I have at this point in time with the city of Linwood and its major challenges. Thank you.
Talk to us about what you know about the issues of Linwood's infrastructure, roads and transportation.
The big issue that the council is deliberating is really how to be able to bring it to par for the whole city of Linwood. The roads and the highways are really falling apart, and the fire department is running very low budget. They gave him a budget, and the next day, they took it away, part of it. And it is not good practice and policy. What I suggest, what they are doing is they want to raise taxes to answer to these questions of fixing the road that has been bad and not been fixed for the last 10 years.
Thank you. Pass it on to the...
I think anyone that's traveled on 196th, or 36th, or 68th, we all know that the roads are in bad shape. I equate that to owning a home and then never taking care of the roof, never taking care of the paint, the sidewalks. It's going to start falling apart. Whether we've had the resources or the priorities haven't been in place, or whatever the reasons, just like in our homes, we need to fix it. And honestly, I don't know what it's going to take, but I think it is going to be a combination of a number of things, whether it's a Livi lid lift, or it's access fees on builders, or whatever needs to happen. I want to be part of finding out that solution as we look at the numbers and help make those numbers make sense for what has to be done to maintain our property that the citizens have entrusted us with. Thank you.
We were listening intently.
So, there are really three issues that have to deal with our infrastructure. One is the age of our infrastructure. The second is cost of maintenance, and the third is the infrastructure's preparation and preparedness for growth that's coming to Linwood. The real solution for that is what the council is working on currently, and that's budgeting for outcomes. That's making sure that our priorities are the core services, fire, police, and public works. The first of those, public works that deals with the infrastructure, is adjusting and fixing our roads, fixing the sewer lines, and all those things that deal with the core services that we need and use every single day. So, as the council budgets for those, makes those priorities the top things that we focus on, we'll be able to circumvent and mitigate all the problems that, well, many of the problems that we're having, because I don't know that we can ever fix all of the problems. But as we do that step by step and make Linwood better tomorrow than it was today, I think we'll be in good shape.
Great. For the past two years, I've been on the Linwood Planning Commission, and the public work people have come forward and given us their transportation plans, have shown us the street maintenance plans. We forward these on to the council, and they are not really ever fully funded. And now, you know, the current members of the council can sit and tell us that these are outcomes that should be budgeted for, but they didn't do it. They have passed a 2015, 16 budget, and they have failed to budget for these outcomes. And if you look at 36, that is a prime example of what happens when you don't maintain the roads. They are now going to have to spend millions more dollars of tearing that road down to the bedrock and then rebuilding it because of the failure of maintaining it. And like has previously been said by Chris, if you don't maintain it, it's going to fall apart, and that's what we're suffering right now. And so, I think the council really has to turn around and start really being serious about funding.
Thank you. Infrastructure needs to be a priority with the Linwood City Council. I believe it has been just more recently. They have done different things. They're talking about it, like some others have mentioned, some different ways of incorporating this in the future budgets. And so, I encourage that, and I would want to continue that. One thing I know about, for example, 36, as we talked about, is a street that needs a lot of help. There are some buses that carry some of our more severely disabled students that aren't allowed to even go down that road. So, I mean, that's kind of very telling, you know, about that. And then, just with the growth of our city, we need to plan accordingly and have a plan for that infrastructure as we grow. And with me being on the city council, I'd really like to guide that process so that we have the infrastructure in place as we grow. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. I couldn't agree with all of the concerns of the folks here that have spoken already. I would only reemphasize again the three things that we all need to be concerned about besides just infrastructure, but that's also fire and police. We have to provide for the essential services, which include infrastructure, but fire and police, and then we've got to have the roads to get them to your door, to help you when you need help. And that's as much as important as having police cars and fire trucks, but we have to have the roads to run them on and the proper roads to do it with. And I could not agree more with what Mr. Hurst said. We, I believe, we as a council have not done our job in approaching this problem and getting down to the answers we need. It's not just a simple matter of raising your taxes. It's also a matter of finding other forms of revenue besides just your utility bill. Thank you.
Oh, hey, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate those words, as well as all the others, because it kind of ties into what I think. We do have a congestion problem. We do have cars, vehicles coming into our city that is a lot more than just the citizens themselves. But those vehicles that come into our city are small business owners. They are our students in the college. They are individuals that are working in our city as well. So, those are three different things in terms of how I feel that we can manage better, and I don't see where the council has done that very well. If we had more positions or jobs available here in the city, our people would not have to go that way. If we had more consideration in terms of the fact that knowing that small businesses, they spend their money here, we need to acknowledge that as well. So, there are some things that are good and some things that are not so good.
Anyway, my closing statement is this, that I'm attending city council often, and we're talking about how do we get funding to address the roads and the fire department. Alternative to taxes, and I was challenged to write my proposal, I still have to do it, and I did do the proposal, and my proposal is creating a council, creating a council of neighbors. And this is, and from that council, I will create... And this is, and from that council, I will create a board...
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. We're an extra 30 seconds.
I need a minute extra. My accent is on the way, and I got bothered. Now my thought, anyway, so, okay, one minute. I did write a proposal that instead of taxing, raising property taxes, because we are now taxed to the max, in a good deal, anyway, so this board that is composed of neighborhood and composed of some commissioners in the city, we will collaborate that and see if we could get money, like I did when the mobile home got sold, and we got money from the governor, we got money from the council, county council, and we got money from the county executive. And we will do it, and it will be all senior citizens that will do it.
First off, I just wanna make clear, I am not a politician. I'm a concerned citizen who's lived in Linwood the majority of my life. I didn't have any hopes or aspirations to be a politician or to be in political office until I went to Linwood University last fall. It was through that class that the city put on that it opened my eyes to everything that's going on in the city. Since then, you can't get rid of me at council meetings, right, Mr. Simmons? I'm at council meetings, I'm at diversity meetings, I'm at work sessions, finance committee, I'm at the planning meetings, sharing Georgia's M&amp;M's. I have grasped the idea and the excitement of what's going on in our city. And yeah, there's problems, there's challenges, there's concerns, but I'm ready to join with others to tackle those things. And I believe that I have a lot to contribute in a positive way in making Linwood a great deal more. And to that end, I would ask for your vote in August and again in November. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it. I appreciate seeing the engagement. I wanna let you know that I have a website at www.benjaminsgoodwin.org, so you can go and there'll be answers to other questions that may not have been presented here. I have a wonderful family that lives here that I'm helping to raise in Linwood. I ask for your vote, and I refer back to the last question that I asked previously when someone is looking for a leader. Can you trust me? And the answer is yes. I've helped to make Linwood better today than it was yesterday, and I'm gonna help Linwood be better in four years than it is today. So I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm George Hurst, running for position number six in the council. And actually, I'm just thrilled to be here, because I'm not in the primary, there's only two of us running, so I go right into the November election. And I've been telling people, I'm, you know, I'm running for city council, and then the voter's pamphlet came out, and I'm not in there, and they're saying, "We thought you were running." So, I am, but not till November, you know? So I just would like to thank this chance and opportunity to be here. Also, I do have a website, and I do answer some questions. And I, just on the back of my card, I'd like to read that my focus as your council member will be to pursue and value resident involvement. The city budget must include citizen priorities, and Linwood is rapidly growing. Together, we can make it thrive. And I think I beat the clock. Awesome.
Thank you. I wanna thank the League of Women Voters for having us, and particularly the few of us who aren't in the primary, but moving to the November election. Thank you for including us. I am prepared to serve the Linwood community. Again, with my unique professional and public experience in public safety, covering the issues through the media side, I've been on both sides of the caution tape. I've been very involved in the internal workings of the city for many years. I'm a major stakeholder, and I'm also proud to tell you that I am endorsed by the Linwood Police Guild, and also the Affordable Housing Council, the Master Builders Association. I want to thank my family for being here as well and supporting me. And I, again, am prepared to serve you as a Linwood City Council member. Prepare for a better Linwood. Elect Shannon Sessions. You can find out more about me at my website at www.shannonsessions.com, and also like me at ShannonSessionsForLinwoodCityCouncil on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, thanks to the, to the League of Women Voters for providing this forum. I think this is a very important forum in a lot of ways, but most importantly, it has been able to engage the citizens and the candidates. And to have this is a very important part of our entire democratic process. I would like to be returned to the council for four more years. I've started several issues, I've been involved in several of the issues, I'm currently involved in several of the major issues, and these are not, these are not easy things to understand. It takes a lot of experience, it takes a lot of time to study these things and to know what the rules are and to play by the rules. And I understand that, and I would like to go back to the council to finish some of these things that I've started. And for that, I ask you tonight for your vote. And thank you all once again.
We have two more people. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Van. Okay. All right. For that, I'm gonna read my statement, my closing. I support better community outreach, neighborhood meetings, and city support to protect our neighborhoods. I believe in families and, oh, you're saying, okay. I believe in families and safety, because that's how I was raised. Truly, I was raised with a village to support, in terms of getting us to where we can not only go from being a child, but also an adult. My experience has been so, and you are not happy with me, are you? I have got my barometer back there. So I'm gonna just say for my heart, I am Shirley Sutton. I am vested in this community. I have worked really hard over the last 10 years. I have served on many, many committees for the city. I have been very instrumental in seeing the achievements that we have accomplished. Thank you.
I guess it's time for me to stand up. Maria and I think, is that right? Is what you told me to stand up? Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's now 9:00 p.m. The library is closed for the evening. You will be...
In my, in my one minute, let me say very simply that at this moment, I am the senior member on the Linwood City Council. And during that timeframe that I have served you folks who live in the city of Linwood, I have never forgotten for a moment that I am responsible to you. I have worked very hard in my effort, year after year, to either support or advocate in every way that I could policies and legislation that provide for the health, the safety, and the general welfare of our community. Having said that, there's not much more than I can add tonight other than to say, I offer you my experience, I offer to you my work ethic, I offer to you the best I have to offer, and would appreciate your voting for me both on Tuesday, the 4th, and returning in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Go.